I'm going to administer the oath of office. And after "I," you will insert your name and then repeat after me all at once. I-
I, J.W. Smith.
-do solidly swear-
Solidly swear, ma'am.
... that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
... and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas-
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
... and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as a member-
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as a member-
... of the City of Salem Springs Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment-
City of Salem Springs Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment.
... of which I am about to enter-
Which I am about to enter.
... in the manner provided by law.
The manner provided by law.
Okay, everybody can sign.
Now we can sign.
I will finish on this and I will give them the beer if you can send you all copies.
I'd like to call the City of Salem Springs Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 14th, 2020 to order. Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Here.
Sally?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Colvin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the special call meeting, November 18th, that we've all previously received. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions, anybody noted? If none, do I have a motion to-
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh... Voice vote or is it roll call?
Voice.
And all those in favor for a voice vote to accept the meetings as, or the minutes as listed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next item will be the election of officers for our current year. The first position that we'll be discussing will be for the chair. And I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chair.
I'd like to make a motion for Todd Colvin.
Second.
And a second. Do we have any other nominations? There being none, do I have a motion to cease nominations?
I move cease nominations and elect by acclamation.
Got that. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second to cease and vote by acclamation, voice vote for same?
Uh, it would be, it needs to be a roll call.
Okay, roll call, sorry. Mr. Phillips, roll call please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Kinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yeah.
Song?
Yes.
All right, motion approved. Uh, hope I don't mess up any of the meetings for you. But, um, next position will be for the vice chair. Like to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate J.W. Smith.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do I have any other nominations for vice chair? None being heard, do I have a motion to cease nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Good, congratulations, J.W. Thank you. Uh, last position will be secretary. Open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate Driscoll.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do I have any other nominations? There being none, do I have a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second? Roll call, Mr. Phillips.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Okay, with that being complete, at this time, uh, we'd like to recess the planning commission meeting now that we exist and, uh, move to the board of adjustments. Do I have to have a vote to recess?
You do. Motion and second.
All right, do I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are recessed?
Then we need a vote.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Voice vote would be especially-
Do I have a voice vote in approval of recessing to the board of adjustments meeting? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. I'd like to call to order the board of adjustments for the City of Salem Springs for January 14th, 2020. First, roll call please.
Montgomery?
Here.
Sally?
Here.
McKinney? Smith? Driscoll?
Here.
Colvin?
Here.
Song?
First item of business will be approval of the minutes of the regular board of adjustment meeting, October 8th, 2019. We've received copies of those minutes. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections needed? Being none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, voice vote of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Being none, the item on our agenda is a variance request for driveway and green space, BOA 1907. Mr. Rhodes will present this, uh, this presentation will also be for the first item on the planning commission agenda as far as the PowerPoint. Thanks, Gil.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations, and members of the commission. Uh, I'm Ben Rhodes, I'm the city's senior planner. Uh, before you is a variance permit for driveway and green space buffer located at 2500 Highway 412 East and also part of 2690 Highway 412, which is the property next door, um, to the east. In addition to these variants, variances, as the chairman stated, I will be presenting on the related special use permit. Uh, this will be the first item considered on the planning commission's agenda when it reconvenes. Uh, the special use permit is solely occurring at 2500 Highway 412 East and is needed because the proposed use is a drive-through. Uh, as the commission will recall, a code change to require, uh, special use permits for drive-throughs was recommended for approval at the November 18th special call meeting of the planning commission. Uh, this ordinance is now adopted by the board of directors as of last Tuesday. Uh, so this is the site plan. Uh, the remainder of the variance centers around the side drive to Highway 16, which is located right here. Uh, there was an access easement granted in 1983 by the property at 2690 Highway 412, known as Kenny Auto Service, uh, to the subject property for the proposed building. Uh, the issue is, is the 1983 access easement is only 20 feet wide, and this is not wide enough to accommodate a 25-foot, uh, wide driveway, and is also not wide enough to allow for the required, uh, six-foot green space buffer along the south property line. Uh, the variance for your considerations are reducing the two-way drive width from 25 feet to 20 feet and a four-foot encroachment into the green space buffer. Uh, this is not a six-foot encroachment because there was a previous variance approved four years ago to, um, allow for a two-foot encroachment into the green space, and that has already been approved, uh, as of 2016, so right now you're just looking at the four-foot encroachment for the remainder bit of the green space there. You will also note that the applicant has shifted this access north, um, to clear the green space buffer, and I'll show that right here, where I'm circling, that the drive does shift up back to the north to, uh, allow that green space to come back in. Uh, as I mentioned at the start of my presentation, I also will be touching on the special use permit, as this is indirectly related to the variance request. Um, the issue is the drive-through beverage center will be touching an R4 zone lot, and you see that zone right here. Uh, the drive-through will be bidirectional, meaning that, uh, one will actually face north while the other one faces south on both sides of the structure located there. Um, there will be no speaker boxes, uh, orders will be made out at a pickup window, and the primary concern is the headlights of vehicles facing southwards, um, that may impact apartments to the south, and you'll see that clearer in the next slide here. And so this is the site, uh, looking to the south from about a month ago, and so we, uh, believe that the apartments here and also this one as well, um, which is under construction, are the ones most likely to be impacted by the proposed drive-through use. Uh, as seen on the staff report attachment, um, staff is recommending condition that a privacy fence be constructed to block the view of the headlights. Um, this, uh, the code is, also requires, um, an opaque screen, it's already in the code. However, um, it does not specify that it actually is a privacy fence. Um, so for example, shrubs or something similar to that, uh, would, would not be, or can be acceptable in some circumstances under current code requirements. However, um, we believe that a fence was, uh, the best method to prevent, uh, light intrusion from the neighboring property. Uh, shifting back again to the variance, uh, this is the location of that drive, uh, 20-foot, um, existing easement. Staff has reviewed the arguments presented by the applicant as well as researching the case, and we do believe that there is evidence to, uh, support a hardship, um, the prime driver being the insufficient size of the access easement by, for a modern, uh, bidirectional driveway. Furthermore, uh, the secondary issue is the traffic conditions at this location are such that secondary, um, driveway is, is really paramount to allow for the secondary ingress and egress to and from the property. Uh, this is why the, uh, access easement was actually granted in the first place. So, uh, by, uh, restricting the drive to just a one-way circulation, it impacts the overall maneuverability, uh, to and from the site, and in turn degrades, uh, traffic safety and convenience. Uh, in order to better explain some of the traffic challenges, um, I would like to invite, uh, Justin Bland, uh, city engineer, to come up and, uh, explain this a little bit more. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Justin Bland, city engineer. Um, so what Ben said was correct, and I just wanted to kind of get him, point out some things that changed, um, somewhat recently at this intersection, um, and they had to do with the, the stoplight there at Progress. Um, you may remember previously when the, uh, north-south, I guess you got a green light going north-south, it went, turned green in both ways, and, um, if you're going north-south, that was kind of bad because you kind of got backed up because there wasn't a dedicated turn lane there, there's not enough space. Um, the city crews have been working with RDOT on that, and what they've, uh, done here, I think about three months ago, was they were able to change this to a split-phase signal, so, so if you're going south, it turns green just going south, and then it goes red, and then it flips, and then if you're going north, it goes green, so, so it's great now because the traffic doesn't get backed up from left turn, car sharing left going onto, uh, Highway 412. The downside, though, is that the cycle time on that, the side streets has, uh, increased, especially in, in peak hours, so what we're seeing is that there's, uh, more of a queue building up on Highway 412 in both directions, particularly, you know, at eight o'clock and five o'clock. So going back to the safety of this site as a whole, you know, you know, staff thinks having this back, um, access is a, is a, you know, huge plus for the safety for any development that goes, that goes here since it is C2, uh, particularly with it being so close to the intersection, there's only maybe, uh, stacking space for maybe six to eight cars here, which at five o'clock, that doesn't take very long to fill up, so. Uh, with that, staff is available for any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I can turn back over to Ben.
Thank you, Justin. Um, so, um, just concluding, um, staff does find grounds for the hardship variance, and we are recommending approval of the special use permit with the stated condition, um, on the fence. And, uh, we are also available for questions initially just on the variance, and then after the planning commission reconvenes, uh, we can then answer any questions specifically to the special use permit. And, uh, with that, we are available for any questions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak to the board? Please state your name and address.
My name is Jason Young with Bates &amp; Associates at 4298 West Bellflower in Fayetteville. Staff explained our conditions here and our reason for requesting the variance, um, pretty well. I don't have anything to add, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the public that would like to address the board in regards to the variance only at this point in time? Yes, sir?
I'm a property owner.
Please, please come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Kenny Lambert, 2690 Highway 412 East.
Thank you.
I'm the property owner there on the corner. Have a couple little things you probably ought to look at before you decide on this.
Sir, can you pass it to our recorded servant as a clerk as opposed to individual members? Thank you.
If you'll look at your picture up here, where that goes on to the road right there, that was this Friday. Um, not real sure what you're going to put a road out right there. I would like to have some sort of barrier or something to keep them from driving through my land. Um, if you go 20 feet, um, if you don't put a curb or something on there, it gets a real, real, um, little, where two cars, I would have a hard time going in and out.
Okay, so, uh, you're concerned about the design between this-
Yeah, I would like some, I'd like to have some input on the design if you do do the variance, um, you know, um, but I'm real concerned about people driving off into my lot, and then I'm real concerned if it rains, where are they going to go?
This, uh, this concern is better addressed during the actual proposal of the special use or just the variance?
Well, if the concerns are primarily centered on the, on the driveway, I would say that's part of the variance request. Um, special use would only be related to the drive-through and impacts thereof.
Thank you.
Question, Ben. The variance on the drive going from the property out to 16, the variance is on the south side of the, of the drive towards the apartments, or is the variance on the north side towards the?
Uh, it would be from the south property line that's shared with the apartments going north, so it would be allowed to allow paving, um, of only a 20-foot driveway rather than 25-
Right.
-along the full width of that given access easement from 1983.
So, the, from, from Highway 16 into the property is only going to be 20 foot wide?
20 foot wide is what you're looking at today, rather than doing 25 foot, which is what the code requires.
Right, so, if I understand, we're not making a variance to make it wider than 20?
No. The variance is to allow for a narrower driveway.
Okay, got you, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? There being none, do I have a motion in regards to this variance request?
I move that based on hardship presented by the applicants, uh, we approve, uh, variance for BOA 19-07.
Of motion to approve BOA 1907? Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Approved? This being the only item on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn board of adjustments?
So moved.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, sign by voice vote, yea?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time we're calling the planning commission meeting back into session. First item on the agenda is a special use development permit that Mr. Rhodes already spoke to us about. Is there anybody on behalf of the applicant who wishes to speak on the special use?
Again, I'm Jason Young with Bates &amp; Associates, and again, uh, it was explained pretty well by staff what we're looking for, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anyone present from the public that wishes to speak in regards to the special use permit? Anyone from the commission have any questions?
I have one. It's an easy one, Ben.
Okay.
The privacy fence, that is to, uh, shield the lights from the apartments. How tall is that going to be?
It normally would be six foot, yep.
And is it, is it going to be a shadow box or is it going to be a solid fence?
Um, we haven't discussed the, the actual style of the fence, uh, we're just suggesting that there be some type of barrier privacy fence to block the lighting, um, but if it was the pleasure of the commission, you could refine the, the, uh, condition to state, you know, exactly the type of fence that has to be constructed, or even increase the height a little bit, as long as it was within code, so.
Okay. Well, speaking from experience, a shadow box fence will not yield, while it'll yield most of the light, it'll still allow light to come through, and, uh, whatever we do, uh, I highly recommend that we make this a, a solid, solid privacy fence rather than shadow box.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have one. Um, Ben, earlier you mentioned the two apartments that we were worried about. Will this fence run the entire boundary, or will it just shield those two?
Well, um, by code, it would have to be the entire boundary. However, as, as I stated earlier, you could beef up the fencing right around the apartments in the condition if you chose to do so, yep.
Anything else from the commission? None being heard, do I have a motion in regards to this special use permit?
I move to approve, uh, special use 1901, subject to the following conditions, that the applicant constructs a, construct a solid privacy fence on the southern border of the line prior to certification of occupancy issue.
Have a motion to approve with the amended word of solid within the privacy fence, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Kinney?
Smith? Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Motion passes will go to the board of directors on February 4th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is significant development permit, SD 1911, for 2301 and 2531 East Main. Senator Rhodes.
Yes, uh, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Ben Rhodes, senior planner. Uh, for your second review item, you're looking at a significant development permit for a new quick-service restaurant and car wash to be on the same lot. Uh, both of these structures are total, uh, 6356 square feet. Um, the, uh, this is occurring at 2301 and 2531 East Main Street. This is, um, uh, by Lehman's View directly south of the Planet Fitness and, uh, west of the Bank of the Ozarks building. So here you see the, uh, site plan, um, showing the proposed structures and parking area. The building on the right will be the restaurant, and the one on the left, uh, to the west, will be the car wash. Um, I'll point out a few notable features. First, you'll note that the northern drive has a substantial curve to it. This is, uh, shown blown up on the right over here. Um, this was a late change due to the inability of the applicant to gain, um, access to the bank's, uh, drive, uh, which was always basically off-site right here. Uh, this, uh, relocated the dry, or excuse me, the relocated drive now aligns with the Planet Fitness driveway, which is crucial for traffic safety. So the curvature of the drive is needed so that, uh, it can pass between the two buildings, uh, connecting both parts of the site. Uh, finally, I'd like to point out that the paving here is, uh, somewhat unique, uh, and that they're showing, um, previous paver stones on part of the parking lot. You'll see this denoted in the brick pattern on the site plan here. Uh, this is needed to decrease, uh, water runoff, uh, from drainage purposes, um, the main drainage basin, uh, being the fountain feature that's located southwest of this area. And, uh, here you see the, uh, proposed elevations. Uh, the buildings will be one-story with parapet, um, on the top and natural stone or block materials. And, uh, here you, uh, see the, uh, project will look like when it's overlaid on top of aerial photo. Um, there are two access points, um, on the south side. Customers wishing to travel eastbound would need to, um, exit, uh, to the north and then travel, um, either to, uh, Southampton or continue along Ravenwood Plaza to, uh, North Progress Avenue. Uh, sidewalks are shown to connect to the building on the south side of the site. And finally, uh, here you see the site, this is looking to the north. The drive-through, uh, use, uh, does not need a special use, you might be wondering, because is technically not touching the residential here, uh, it's separated by Ravenwood Plaza. Uh, staff is recommending approval, uh, with no conditions needed, as the applicant complies with all applicable codes, and staff is available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Rhodes, is anyone here on behalf of the applicant that wishes to speak to the board or commission?
Yes, Scott McLean, I'm with MRT Holdings.
Can I get your address, please?
Yes, 653 West Dixon, Fayetteville, Arkansas. Uh, I'm just here available to answer any questions that you might have, but, uh, don't want to take any unnecessary time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone here from the public that wishes to address the commission in regards to this project? There being none, does any of the commissioners have any questions? There being none, do I?
But, but, I was just waiting to give everybody else a chance. I seem to be the only one speaking. Being on the property here, there is, there are only one exit onto Main Street from these two.
Uh, there's actually two exits or entrances into Main, um, well, exit if you're going to the west.
Yeah, there's a, I'm talking about just exit, uh, I, I, I know there's two entrances.
They're, they're bi-directional depending on which, uh, way someone's wanting to travel, so if they, if they did want to exit the site, they could exit and then go back that direction.
Yeah, okay, that's what I say, if, when they come out of there, they can only turn
That's correct. They can only turn west, that's, that's what I was saying earlier, if they were wishing to go east, they would come out on Ravenwood Plaza, then come out, turn here, or go straight and go to Progress.
Okay, and there's only one exit out the back, which is for both properties, or both businesses?
Correct, one exit out the back, yes.
Any other questions from the commission? There being none, do I have a motion in regards to this project?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve significant development permit 19-12? Without no conditions, without conditions, yep. 19, I'm sorry, 1912? Am I looking at the different one? 1911, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
1911, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the next one, sorry.
No problem.
1911.
I will have a motion to approve SD 1911.
Second.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please. Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Motion approved, this will also go to the Board of Directors on February 4th of 2020. Next item on the agenda is significant development permit 19-12, 3500 Highway 412 East.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, the next item for your consideration is another significant development request. Uh, this one is occurring at 3500 Highway 412, is best described as the vacant lot immediately to the east of the new Popeyes Restaurant. Uh, the request is to construct a 6,800 square foot retail tire store. Uh, here is the site plan showing the proposed building. Uh, it is identical orientation to Popeyes, just, uh, just west, uh, just to the west of this proposal. Parking access will be from the same fashion as Popeyes, with the vehicles coming off of the shared access drive, as you can see shown here. Sidewalks are shown to connect to the building here. And drive, the drive aisles are slightly, uh, wider at this location, um, and that's done intentionally to aid for the loading of vehicles for service, because the, the service bays will be along this side of the building with a east or west orientation. Uh, here you see the, uh, elevations, what the proposed building will look like, the customer, uh, area will be along the front, and here with, um, vehicles, of course, in the back. And, uh, here's the, uh, plan area overlay and how it will fit in the surrounding environment. Uh, the house located here is presently considered abandoned and is unoccupied. Uh, this is the site looking to the south, uh, the picture was taken slightly before Popeyes has opened, um, as you of course probably know, that's already open for business right now. Uh, staff is recommending approval with also no needed conditions, and we are available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, anyone from, um, behalf of the applicant here to address?
Nate Bachelor, from CEI Engineering, 3108 Southwest Regency Parkway in Bentonville.
Thanks, sir.
Happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it. Anyone on behalf of, or from the public that wishes to speak in regards to this project? Anyone on the commission have questions in regards to this project? There being none, do I have a motion in regards to SD 19-12?
Make a motion to approve SD 19-12?
Have a motion and a second. Roll call when you're ready, sir. Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes, will go to the Board of Directors on February 4th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plat development permit, PP 19-07, 23,006 Lawless Road. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you again, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So, uh, transitioning now from significant developments to preliminary plats, um, you're looking at a preliminary plat, uh, for a continuation of a housing addition. Uh, this is located on the, uh, to the east of phase, phase one of the Lawless Ranch addition and north side of Lawless Road, uh, at the shown address there. Um, the proposal is to plat the second through fifth phases, completing out the subdivision. Uh, the first phase was completed earlier this year and, uh, presently has two-family housing. Here you, uh, see the proposed, uh, site plan. The lots are sized appropriately for two-family housing. Um, as noted in the staff memo, this property is not zoned, nor it can be, it be annexed in the city at this time. Uh, should the property be annexed, uh, the R3 zone will be the best fit for the, uh, proposed use. Um, I'd like to point out that the, uh, master street plan does call for a future minor arterial street, that'd be on the north side of the addition here. Uh, this is an extension of Oak Crest Road, uh, developer shows, uh, connections to this future street. Um, there's no timetable at this time as to when that would be constructed or finished. Because of, uh, multiple connections to Lawless Road, um, this is, uh, not considered a quote "no outlet" street subdivision, however, it does, uh, does not meet the, uh, fire department's remoteness rule, so the developer is aware of this, um, and plans to only construct the first 30 dwelling units until a secondary access can be finished, um, either to the north or west of the subdivision, um, and a condition on this will be on the final plat permit whenever the final plat is ready to come forward. Uh, and here you see the, uh, site, this is looking, uh, to the east, um, Lawless Road is on the right, and duplexes in phase one are shown at the bottom of the picture right there. Uh, Lawless Road was improved in 2004 with the anticipation that the, uh, traffic generated from this and other developments in the area would be handled by the road improvement. Uh, the existing farmhouse located there, um, is to be retained, um, as one of the proposed lots in the subdivision. Uh, in terms of compliance with the future land use map, uh, the addition does fall within the proposed density, when factoring the maximum suggested density in the median housing density range. Again, with the, um, property not zoned, the city has no say over the proposed land use, only, um, the zoning controls the land use classes. Staff suggested to the developer, um, to consider single-family housing along the perimeter areas, uh, those butting the, uh, open farmland, um, to help ease the density transition from rural to urban, and that's just a suggestion, not a requirement. Staff is recommending approval with no conditions, and we are available for any questions, thank you.
Is there anyone on behalf of the applicant that wishes to address the commission?
Yes, sir, Ron Holmeyer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mount Olive Street. Couple of points, uh, yes, this is being proposed as potential, probably two-family, but time will tell as to whether that need will continue, but because there is no legitimate, in our opinion, place to, um, switch from two-family that's there now to single-family without having them side by side, we would prefer they be across the street or a different block. So the first phase for sure is going to be two-family, but then as the market demands, the remainder may go single-family, it just depends on, like I said, the market demands. I do disagree with the presentation on the maximum of 30 units, because my understanding from the fire marshal is, is that remoteness and no outlet restriction of 30 are not connected, so we simply can't develop the lots that are beyond the remoteness measurements, and so in reality, there are 13 lots that would not be able to be built until the remoteness is addressed, but the rest of the 56s, it would be, so just wanted to point that out.
And I have, there's not a problem with complying with the, the wording, it's just the wording of the presentation?
Correct.
Complying with the, the code requirement, it's only the wording of the presentation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission in regards to this project?
Back. I'm Suzy Gilbert.
Please state your name and address, please.
14657 Don Hill Road. I was here when the first part of the development was developed. After that transpired, we had the road, main road that goes across our farm, and I have pictures. We've owned this farm since 1935, my grandparents bought it, never had this happen, but according to a letter from Mr. Plant, our problem, we did it all wrong, we spent 14, the, went at, we, when, after one of our big storms last spring, it rosh, completely washed out the road that goes, transpires across our farm. We spend the money, hire the people, get expert people to fix it at the cost of $14,000. We have another four-inch rain, out it goes again. So at that point, I got in touch. If you can't see on Ben's picture, do you have any more, Ben? Uh, I probably should have talked to him, but there is a retention pond that they assure me is working properly. That's lower, that, see those high-line wires in Ben's picture? That, my father gave to the city at, with no compensation, to build those wires. He's donated a corner of our property, straightened out the corner that's so dangerous coming down Don Hill Road, city has never done it, he gave them the land to do it. He's done, he's allowed them with no compensation to install a sewer line in our farm for later use, done everything he can possibly do to help the city and go ahead and provide for progress. Our only request is that you do not allow these one-car cracker boxes, they're horrible. We drove up to one of them in my minivan, my minivan won't even fit in the garage and open the door, that those, that they've already built, I don't know what Mr. Kryne's plans are, he has some rather nicer duplexes across the street on, across the street on Don Hill, but that's not in the plan, not with 56 of them. We would just like to see it be houses, there's a better, bigger need in our opinion, for normal houses, for widows and people that, Oliver, that are looking for a, a small house, like what's going up on Heiko, every one of those is sold. Also, my husband and I drove over to the new first phase of this the other week, and I bet you there aren't eight of those duplexes, they're leased, they're charging a thousand dollars a month rent on these tiny boxes. I don't know, as I said, I feel like I'm already in Bernie Sanders world here, because it's awful, and the flooding, and the damage it's doing to our property, it means nothing to the city. As I said, we keep spending money to try and make it nice, keep it nice, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public or the applicant wish to speak? You have three minutes, please state your name and address, please.
Mike Burns, 23014 Lawless Road. So, I, I don't know what questions I can ask, since this is just a preliminary plating, but I wanted to know about, which I haven't talked to him, but about the water retention or anything like that for this, um, concerns, since they built that previous, um, addition in the fire lane road, how much water builds up in, mine's the house that shares the driveway with Kryne, and then the, uh, my neighbor next to us, we have more water building up in the back of our yards now, since they built that fire lane that's there, which looks in the pictures that you had previously, is going to go away, Ben, is that correct? Yes? Okay, so, I, I don't know what that's going to do, the water retention, it wasn't this way before, so that might help that, but I have a concern about that, and then the fencing, as you talked about on the, the, uh, one of the earlier things, you talked about the fencing in between properties for lights, I have a question about that. Um, and then, as many cars were going to use that road, um, that's, a shared driveway for me, I have a concern, we already have a problem on Lawless with cars going rather fast, I would want to know if there's any way I could ask for maybe a speed table on that road or something to slow down traffic, that's some of my requests or questions.
Thank you. Uh, in regards to our earlier fencing discussion, that was primarily between two different, uh, zoning types, but this property being out in the county, it's going to be a little bit different to meet with the developer in regards to, uh, developer have any comments to any of the list?
My name's Jim Kryne, um, I live at 2306 Lawless Road. Uh, as far as, couple of things, uh, if you see, I don't know why, I, I don't understand how there could be more water in the yard, because the way it is, it's draining to the west, and then it goes under the street, I mean, it's nuts wet right now. And, uh, I would also say to the other peoples, they'll, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't claim to be one, but I don't think the water's ever gone over the dam at City Lake either, so, I mean, we've experienced some crazy weather in the last little bit, as far as that goes, but, uh, I would also say, I would think if, uh, that was in, uh, I talked to one of the other neighbors, if this was in the city limits, which some of these people could control, there's, there's never any police on that street, and the sheriff, with it being- And the sheriff, with it being so close to the county, it's kind of, I mean, so close to the city, it's somewhat safe. They do not patrol that. I mean, it's a, it's a good wide enough street, but you don't see sheriffs, you don't see police, you don't see nothing there. As far as the fencing, I don't see that being a problem. I mean, I'd be glad to put a fence there if that was the least I could do. I want, I, I live there currently. I want to be a good neighbor to all these people. I know it's, it's kind of changing their life, but I'm sorry about that, but I mean, when their houses were built, it changed people's lives too, and it's been a good place for them to live as far as that goes. It is a good area, and I think it'd be a good place. And also, I don't, I don't foresee this, but I don't know. I don't see us building all duplexes in there, but I feel like the neighbors, I think, when they built the duplexes, it was originally a single-family, I feel like they've been baited and switched. I think that's what a lot of them felt, a lot of the people. I didn't have nothing, you know, that wasn't my project, but they got approved for single-family houses, then six months later, they came in and applied for duplexes. I think that kind of raised the hair on people's necks a little bit too, but we, another thing to this lays, if I build these, they will not be single-stall garages. We build, we build a little nicer duplexes, in my opinion, than these, and we manage them ourselves, and we're here, we see, we know the people that live there, so I'd be glad to answer any more questions. I hope, I think that was everything on your list? So.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that wishes to address? Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Chris Horton, 22986 Lawless Road, Salem Springs. I just want to bring to everyone's attention my concerns for this, and I spoke to Mr. Kryne earlier today. First of all, he's correct. The Riggins' development, that was approved as single-family, so whoever's fault that is, I don't know. Somebody messed that up, and now we have the cracker boxes that she was talking about, which decreases our property value out there. Lawless Road cannot handle the traffic that is already there right now. We've had two vehicles that's sitting out in the road that's been wrecked in the last few months. Traffic comes through there at a high rate of speed, no lighting after dark, so it's extremely dangerous. Not, and I know Mike mentioned that, Mr. Burns mentioned that about the lighting. Kids can't ride their bikes along the road anymore, and yet we're going to try to put in 56 more of these multifamily living spaces. Mr. Kryne is right, and it's been mentioned here that this is not city-zoned area, so when I called and talked to the county myself and spoke with them about my concerns, their words were verbatim, "We can send a patrol officer around, but Salem Springs is ultimately responsible for creating the overflow coming from all the development in a small localized area." That was from the county. Crime's another issue, concern, and all these landowners that have addressed the same issue, as I mentioned, not really anything new. I just feel like nobody's really caring about the logistics of what we're doing or what's going on. I'm, I'm a lifetime resident of Salem Springs. I love Salem Springs. I want to see it grow, progress. I do that, but I don't think we're thinking about the logistics of what we're doing. And I sympathize with my neighbor's water concerns, but I'm, I am at 22986, which is just, just catty-corner from Mr. Kryne's property there, and with all due respect, I don't think there's anybody that's dealt with any more flooding issues than I have. And when I say two major flooding issues, I'm talking over $20,000 repairs. I've got flooring out of my house right now. The drainage continues to get worse. So, again, it's not about progression. I, I'm okay with that, but we got to think about some logistics here as far as what are we creating? That's, that's, that's my big concern here on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak in regards to this project? Well, one time. One more, one more time. Please repeat your name and address for the...
Susie Gilbert, 14657 Don Hill Road, Walnut Grove Farm. Well, I have two questions. This road has been on the map forever in the big master plan on the north side. I believe that's going to include our property there too, probably, which I don't know how you do that eminent domain. You just take it? How do they acquire the land for that road?
My understanding of it at this time, staff can correct me, it's, it's a plan, and as properties develop over time, developers have to shift to match that plan.
Okay. I'm 73 years old. I've seen the water go over that dam several times, to the point of where it was a complete flood from Pete Allen's Gate to the north, almost a half a mile. So, that's not unusual at all. I mean, it's, it doesn't happen every year, but it does happen. And I've had three people, one Joe Wilbright, who's an expert on the land and has worked on our property in conjunction with the Nature Conservancy. They have never seen our road flood that went across our farm. So, to have Salem tell me that, that's not our fault, that's, that's not true. It's all this development is taking up the land. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Mike Horton, 23063 Lawless Road. And even though it may not look like a water issue, that is one of my main concerns. I live just down the back west of this project, which is directly across the road from the first project that was put in, and the water has gotten worse. It doesn't take much rain anymore to make our water meter lids start floating and find them elsewhere. I think if this would proceed, I would really like to see a single-family and that perhaps, I know you mentioned it is different, but if it does proceed, that there be a large fence put around that and also an additional retention pond, because you can see there's, is a lot of water, and whether it may not be possible, after you wake up in the morning after a big rain, you'll find out that it is possible because it's in your yard. So, that's a big concern to me, and I'm a little farther west, and it's still a concern along with several of these others concerned that's been mentioned. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Ben, I do need the members have questions? Does staff have any comment on the existing detention proposal? I mean, and the capacity that it...
Justin Blain, City Engineer. So, as far as that last comment goes, there is actually going to be an additional detention basin proposed in the southeast corner. This, this property actually kind of splits, and there's a ridge line that kind of goes through here, so some of it goes northwest and some of it goes to the southeast. So, there will be an additional pond there created to address the water coming south from the site. At, you know, at this point in time, I know there's some new members on the, on the commission here. We, you know, the way that this typically works is that an engineer will turn in a preliminary plat with a preliminary drainage report. So, it's not like a detailed report at this point in time, but conceptually, he's shown the volumes there to address what's going to happen. If this is approved, they'll move forward with the actual detailed design, which they'll be turned in to us for review, and sometimes, sometimes these things have to shift out a little bit to make work. So, so right now, the preliminary drainage report shows that this will be adequate. You know, we'll see what the actual detail comes in, what it looks like, so there'll be further analysis from this point on forward is where I'm going with that, but does that address your question? Yeah, absolutely. If the final numbers don't show that, we can definitely make changes between now and moving ahead, absolutely.
Justin, regarding gentleman's question, do you have any plan to add lights, traffic lights, streetlights?
We, we don't, and that's, it's, this site is kind of challenging because it's not in the city, so we actually have no oversight over that. City Limits is maybe 300 feet south of Lawless Road in this area. So, this is kind of that planning area where we have a little bit of authority to oversee developments, but it's ultimately not a city property, so we don't actually regulate the long-term maintenance of those places.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission have a question or comment?
Mr. Chairman? And I would just like to take the opportunity just to expand a bit just on what Justin just said, and this is just for the benefit of the, the public and for our new members, because this is outside the city limits. Our, our review here is very limited, and that is by, by state law. What we're confined to looking at is basically, you know, does the infrastructure meet our standards as far as, do they have proper utilities? Do the streets meet our standards? Is the water service sufficient? Is, you know, do they have, you know, sewer, or do they have sufficient septic, that sort of thing? The, the use, is it, whether it's going to be single-family, multifamily, or commercial for that matter, we are by state law not allowed to regulate that. And so, you know, and that, and that's just, that's just the, the hand we're dealt, that, that's, that's the, you know, that, that's just the, the cards, you know, that we're, we're given to play. So, you know, whether you like it or not, I mean, that's the, that's what we're dealing with here. So, we have a limited amount of review available to us. So, we're, we're here today, I mean, just like I said, to, for, you know, limited amount of review, so I would just urge everybody to keep that in mind. You know, we've sometimes, in the past, and, you know, sometimes gotten, gotten bogged down on issues that are not, not before us, and so just, you know, just urge everybody to keep in mind what we're, what we're here for tonight. Just a word of caution.
Thank you. There's no further comment. Do I have a motion in regards to preliminary plat 1907?
I move to approve primary, preliminary plat development 19-07.
Motion, do I have a second?
Take it.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Riscull?
Yes.
Solvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion carries this matter goes to the Board of Directors on February 4th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plat development permit, PP 19-08.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Before you, is another preliminary plat. This is site, is located east of Phase Two and south of Phase One of the Heritage Ranch addition on the south side of Lawless Road at the address shown. This is just south of the project that you just reviewed just now. The proposal for your consideration is the plat, the third phase, and that will be completing out the subdivision. The second phase was completed last year and presently has single-family housing. This project is a resubmission of Phase Three, which was approved in 2016. However, now that is considered expired, and the project changes the lot configuration and street layout from the 2016 plan. So, this is the proposed site plan. Lots are sized appropriately for a single-family housing in the R2 zone. There are two points of access, which allows this to be considered a, or allows us to not be considered a no-outlet street subdivision. The lot sizes are slightly smaller than the earlier phases, however, most of these will be tucked in behind the existing houses, save for two homes on the end of Heritage Ranch Drive. The detention basin is existing in that southwest corner of the side and is sized correctly for this subdivision. Staff is suggesting a condition that a lot line adjustment be agreed upon by the two homeowners located here. This is needed so that the houses meet their side-on-corner setbacks, which go in effect when the new street, which is Dusty Lane, is accepted by the city. Rather than allowing these houses to fall out of zoning conformity, staff suggests that the excess land be either, on either side of Dusty Lane right-of-way be deeded to the adjoining lots, giving them the land needed to meet the correct setbacks once the street opens up. A lot line adjustment will be accomplished through the final plat survey, so a separate land survey would not be required for that. Here you see the site. This is looking to the south. Autumn Glen is the next subdivision to the south there, and then Allen Elementary is there, just to give you some orientation. The vacant lots here, that's where the, the new street will come in, that is mentioned, Dusty Lane, and that connects back to Carl Street, so that, like I said, there's going to be two entrances into the subdivision, that part of it. Staff is recommending approval with the stated condition in the staff report, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Anyone on behalf of the applicant developer wishes to speak to the commission?
Yes, Ron Holmeyer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mount Olive. I really have no additional comments. He's done a good job, just available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Is anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this topic?
My name is Jana Pavlock. I just moved to 2207 North Carl.
Thanks, ma'am. You have three minutes.
In Salem Springs, and my biggest concern about this new project is the price of these homes that's going in, size and pricing of these homes. And also, even though we've got said detention, retention pond, we do have water issues running behind our house, and just beyond our property line is a big pond that stays there the majority of the time. We've had neighbors that have talked to the builder about it, and we still are having that issue. But like I said, I, that concern and the property that's going to be built as far as quality of those homes, sizing, pricing, because I don't want the property values of my home going down. Thank you.
Quite like the, the last project, the drainage features for this are submitted at one level during preliminary plats and has to be acceptable to the city's drainage standards, since this is in the city, before construction be allowed. Anyone else wish to speak in regards to this? Please state your name and address, sir, and you have two minutes.
Gerald Powell, 2403 Heritage Ranch Drive. My house is, it won't work here.
Actually, I think it did.
My house is this house right here, so I share a fence line with this. I didn't fully understand what size are these lots in here in relationship to the lots that are around here and with the new houses?
Where they'd match up to the existing development?
All this, as I saw, it looked like it's all new lots. This, this area was approved 13 years ago for development, and now I see they're trying to redraw this and change the lot sizes and everything, but I don't understand the lot sizes exactly or what size of houses they're going to put in here. Is that, do we have that information? Is that, do we have that information?
Ben or Mr. Homeyer, can you address the phasing, density, size change, transition from north to south?
Lot size looked significant from that, what I saw, the lot size looked significantly smaller than the current lot size in here, the subdivision.
Mr. Rhodes is going to try to help us out here a little bit.
Okay.
Excuse me. So, yes, you're correct that this is the, this is the third and final phase of Heritage Ranch. It was started in around 2004, Phase One, that sat basically vacant for, in that one phase, for many, many years. And then they came back with the second phase, which connected this here. Now, they're going back with the third phase. The lot sizes, as I stated in my report, are slightly smaller. They're around 7,000 square foot lots. Some are larger, some are about right at 7,000. And that meets the R2 zoning, and we have to go by zoning. We can't go by what the earlier phases were or what might have been promised at one point in time. The zoning is the police power. It's what controls the land use and the size of the lots and size of the homes.
Because this is now in the city where as in the past...
This is in the city limits. Here, I'll show back here. This is in the city limits, Zone R2. It is meeting the minimum R2 standards.
Thank you.
What is the minimum R2 standards?
It's 7,000 square foot lots at 60-foot lot width.
Do you know what the current lot sizes are as far as square foot?
I don't have that on hand. I don't.
Where are they?
Quarter acre.
Quarter acre? I don't think quite quarter, but I think it's actually more than quarter.
Well, that, that was what was listed on our, when we bought our home, it was listed as a quarter acre lot.
Does anybody know what size house or what they're going to construct in here?
It will transition, or it will be per the R2 zoning, which if I remember correctly, is single-family dwellings.
Size, price?
I, I could not speculate what market values would be for such a thing.
What appears from what I saw put up here, it looks like it's inconsistent with the, with the housing around it, that's why. And I don't, you know, I, I don't understand exactly why Phase Three was approved 13 years ago, and now somebody's coming in and redrawing it, it looks like.
Actually, sir, with, with the number of years that it stayed dormant and those permits expire after X amount of time, and this was many years that it expired, and basically it starts over.
Why are they calling Phase Three then? All of us out there see the sign, and they say that it's Phase Three. So, if it's Phase Three, why isn't a Phase Three of what's been approved? Otherwise, it's a new subdivision.
Some aspects, I could see what you're saying, yes, because this is a preliminary plat...
It's not Phase Three from what I saw. It has nothing to do with Phase Three. It has to do with a new subdivision, new lots, new size houses, new everything.
Which is why we're starting the preliminary plat process, because it is a new design.
I think you need to go out there with the signs they put up and let people know that this is not Phase Three. It is a new subdivision with new plots, new sizes of lots, new housing. Because I don't, I think this is kind of a farce that you're telling it to, oh, it's Phase Three. You don't have anybody show up here because they don't, they know what Phase Three is. They know what Phase One is, they know what Phase Two is, they were developed, now it's Phase Three. There's approval of Phase Three. We know what those lots were, we know what they look like, we know what the streets were.
Actually, Phase Three was not approved, sir. That's why it's never been...
Well, it was approved, and they're still calling it Phase Three.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Homeyer?
I'm going to do my best, but I'm going by memory. I didn't bring my notes with me. Yes, the lot sizes are smaller. If you look at Phase One, the lots there front on Lawless Road itself were wider and deeper than the rest of the subdivision, even from the get-go. In an attempt to mimic the houses that are just east of there, that were already existing, those lots were one acre, but they were very narrow for one acre and very deep. So, that was the purpose there. The next row behind it was then brought down to an average of 8,500 square feet, I think, because again, I didn't bring the old file to remember what that exact number is, but I think that was about the square footage we were shooting for. And these are running on average, you know, the average is running closer to 7,200 than 7,000. The lots are 60-foot wide. The builder is the same builder that built on Carl Street. He is going to build a similar home with a slightly lower price point. Obviously, smaller home, it's going to have a slightly smaller price point, because the price point of the ones on Carl Street are at 300,000 and above, and he would just like to get a little, a little bit below that with what he's putting in this time. And in addition to that, the south side of all this backs up to Autumn Glen, and that is part of the reason he's wanting to reduce the sizes because of that influence as well.
So, the size is greatest at the north and closer to the core of the city?
Right. As you go from north to south, the lots get smaller and the houses will be smaller in this phase. And, you know, it's the same builder that did Phase Two, that's why he's calling it Phase Three. Even, but because the permit expired probably 12 or more years ago, it had to be reauthorized.
Thank you.
It seemed like there was another question they had, I don't remember what it was. Drainage on those backyards. I know it sounds counterintuitive, but once we put in the street, it will help that drainage situation tremendously. And then we're also going to be with this development, building a ditch along those backlines where they say there's water standing now to direct it into that boxes there, so that it will quit running into their backyards, but actually go into the drainage system. That's what it was. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Ma'am, ma'am, we can't hear you from...
That answers my question about property values.
Okay, thank you.
So, that, that's my, like I said, that's my biggest concern, is having a smaller, less expensive house go in right behind mine, so...
I understand that. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the commission? Being none, do I have a motion in regards to preliminary plat 1908?
Make a motion to approve preliminary plat 19-08?
Motion to approve 1908, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Motion carries this matter goes to the Board of Directors on February 4th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plat development permit 19-09, 3900 block of Highway 412 East.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Before you is the final preliminary plat for your consideration this evening. The site is located directly north of the Grandview Estates that some of you might remember, recently reviewed by the commission and due east of Eastern Hills on the south side of Highway 412 East. The proposal for your consideration is the plat out 29, two-family lots, of which one will be a detention basin yielding 56 new dwelling units. I believe there was a scribbler there in the staff report that said 28 lots. There's actually 29 total lots in the, in the development. As the staff report states, the property is not zoned. However, unlike the Lawless Ranch addition, this one can annex into the city, and this is a suggested condition. Before you, here in the slide is the site plan. The addition is a similar layout to Meadow Brook subdivision, if you're familiar with that one, with all proposed lots around an O configuration. However, the difference with this addition is that the, there will be a connection on the backside of the O configuration here, and that actually will tie in to the Grandview addition. So, the Grandview had a stubout on the north part of that, and this will all interconnect. The lots are sized appropriately for two-family housing upon annexation. The second staff condition relates to the number of units permitted on the no-outlet street. This is limited to 30. This is not, so it's not really a fire code remoteness issue, but rather just how many lots are allowed on a no-outlet street. So, when this, when the street in Grandview is built and dedicated to the city, then this, that issue will go away and it will automatically connect at that point. But they can't do more than 30 until that happens. So, here is the site. This is looking to the south, the development to the right here, that's Eastern Hills, and then the one to the south up here, Ridgestone, and of course, Grandview Estates. So, staff is recommending approval with the two conditions related to the annexation and also the limited development units until platted access is granted on the south side of the addition. And we are available for any questions. Thank you.
So, Ben, are we assigning the new zoning for, for this property?
Not at this time. That, that's done solely by the Board of Directors upon annexation.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Anyone from the owner wishing to speak to the commission in regards to this project?
Ron Homeyer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mount Olive, and just here to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this project? Being none. Anyone from the commission wish to question or comment in regards to this project? Being none. Do I have a motion in regards to preliminary plat 19-09? Motion for the commissions and the preliminary plat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney? Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved, goes to the Board of Directors, February 4th, 2020. Next item of business is board approval permits, board of per, permits from Mr. Rhodes, and he will immediately go into staff-approved permits upon that completion.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Thank you again. So, I have a few more items to cover, of information only. No recommendation is required from the commission on these, but I will take questions at the end of my presentation once I roll through all the different permits that we're looking at. So, the first one item is a right-of-way closure and lot consolidation combination. This is at the 300 block of Highway 59 North. Basically, the field that's just to the west of Cobb and north of the old gas station at Highway 59 and 412. There is actually a platted subdivision there from 1967 that was never constructed. So, the applicant's intent is to reorganize the lots and to close the unneeded rightaways for commercial use. And staff is, staff is aware of no construction plans pending or anything for the lots that they're wanting to, to look at. As the slide states, this will go before the board as an ordinance on February 4th, 2020. Here's the site plan. North has switched on use, and north is to the right, this is Highway 59 in the bottom and 412 on the left there, showing you the sizing of the lots proposed, and the dotted line is the old right-of-way. And here you can see kind of a better view of the old right-of-way and easements that are proposed for close, closure and that hash, hatching. Here, I'll just kind of show that, this, this whole area here. And then here's the drone view, the, basically encompassing this entire area for that project. So, moving forward, we have a lot split that was approved by staff last year. This was to split off basically 7,000 square foot lot from a larger tract there, says you see the circle in red. And then this is the site plan showing Lot Two there in the bottom. And those of you that are new, staff does approve lot splits now. They do not go to the commission for approval. And then moving forward here, we have another lot split, this 27 block of Waukesha Road. This is splitting off a 5.08 acres from Lot One of the Pine Ridge addition, which is located just south of Trail Ridge, which is another subdivision approved last year. The new lot is Lot One A here at the bottom. That is being split off from that larger piece. This has been approved, but has not yet been filed for record. And then a, finally, we do have a, or actually, second to last, we have a lot line adjustment for Jason Dugger, 706 and a half, South Haico Street. This was to adjust this lot here to essentially move the property line to the north to allow for the new residents to build a carport on the site. And here you see, this is the, the old lot line and then the new lot line shifting, shifted north. So, this is basically a simple lot line adjustment and consolidation, because they did take out this old lot line there to make Lot Two a larger, larger piece. And then finally, we have a, another lot consolidation. This is at 719 West Alpine Street, and this was to consolidate these six lots into two different lots, as shown here on the next slide. We have, so these were all individual lots, even though the house was built over three of them, it was, they were individual lots. So, these were consolidated together to have one lot here for the house and then a secondary lot there bottom for 7R. And we have not received a building permit for that at this time. With that, that concludes all our staff-approved or board-approved permits, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners have any questions or comments about any of the staff-approved permits? Being none, unless there's any other from members of the commission? Congratulations, welcome, new guys and returning guys. And other than that...
Do I get a chance to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
New guys, don't be too shy. You can speak up and make a motion also.
Second that. If there's no other comments or concerns, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We're adjourned.